Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, July 8, 2019. Prior to our roll call this evening, I would like to remind anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, to simply get a speaker request form there in the back of the room, and kindly give that to our city clerk Lynn Fazekas. She'll get it to me, and we'll try to get you on at the appropriate time. Roll call, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finukin.
Here.
Smith. Fagan.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
Just for important information, our third ward alderman Tracy Smith had notified us, and he is on vacation at this time. We'll expect him back at our next city council meeting. Several weekends ago, police officer Aaron Lockhart and I joined other area officials in the Rolling Thunder Motorcycle Motorcade, where we visited several area senior facilities. We visited Pine Acres, Barb City Manor, the County Rehab and Nursing Home, Heritage Woods, Oak Crest, and Bethany Rehab. This event afforded us the chance to say thank you to our senior veterans. It was organized once again by local vet Frank Byerlotzer, and it featured the talents of one of our own, Gene Vanden Bosch. At each senior center, Gene played the National Anthem on his bugle. Gene has been a member of Bugles across America for 20 years. In addition, Gene is a longtime trombonist in the DeKalb Municipal Band. This evening, I'd like to invite Mr. Vanden Bosch forward for the Bugling of the Star which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Spangled Banner, after which I would invite us all to remain standing for our Pledge Mr. Vanden Bosch.
Thank you, Gene.
of Allegiance.
As I mentioned, we have a true community treasure in Frank Byerlotzer, who devotes so much of his time honoring veterans and veteran causes throughout our county. The motorcade is just one of those. Prior to presenting a special certificate to Frank this evening, I'd like him to say just a few words about veterans in our community. Frank?
Thank you for the invitation, and there's a lot of things that go on with veterans. We do the Mayor's Memorial Day Breakfast every year. This coming year will be the 29th year. We're already planning it. This is about the sixth year with the motorcade, but it was the 12th year of the Veteran Weekend. All your different veteran organizations have different projects going on at all times. I happen to belong to about six or seven different veteran organizations, and quite active, and I'm proud to be a veteran and be active. We have the DeKalb County Veterans Assistance Commission that absolutely helps all of our veterans in DeKalb County, and they even reach out and do people from outside the county if need be. So there's a lot of things going on. You're all invited to the Mayor's Memorial Day Breakfast already. It's in the planning. Get ahold of me and let me know your email address, and I'll be sure to give you an invitation to anything going on. On the 22nd of June, when we did that last run, we dedicated a POW MIA monument in front of the Genoa Veterans Home. If DeKalb would like to have one, it costs about $5,000 in donations to make it happen. I would be willing to help see one get erected in Kelb if they'd like. And it's an honor to have been invited here. Thank you.
Frank, I appreciate your work, that along with many of the veterans groups. I know Mike Embry has been very, very active, and Mike said to me the other day, "You know, we are becoming one of the most veteran-friendly communities in northern Illinois," and it's because of your efforts and Mike Embry's and others, and so we thank you. So, on behalf of the city of DeKalb, I'd like to read this certificate, Frank. I'd like you to come forward and get it. Certificate of recognition, this certificate presented to Frank Byerlotzer for continued service honoring senior veterans in the city of DeKalb, and especially for coordinating the annual Motorcycle Motorcade event. Please help me say thank you to Frank Byerlotzer. Thank you, Frank.
Is there money in here? I have another meeting. I have to go. It's on my way out.
Thank you, Frank. While you're getting those thank yous, we'll move this along. We'd like to approve tonight's agenda. Unless there are any additions or deletions to the agenda, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Roll call.
Finukin.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
The agenda is approved as printed. We now move along to public participation, and it is at this point that anyone can speak to any item on the agenda, or any item, for that matter, not on the agenda. If you are speaking to an item on the agenda tonight, you're more than welcome to speak to that item now, or if you'd like, you may wait until that item on the agenda. We do have one gentleman who would like to speak to an item not on the council agenda tonight. We did spend some time during the committee of the whole on a topic, and that is Robert Goring. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody in the room, council members. I wanted to say that in line with the veterans' recognition, I live downtown, a block behind us. I see so many veterans and their families, people in wheelchairs rolling up on locusts to take those selfies with the people that are ... That is the ... I don't know who did it, and I ... Excuse me. I just have to tell you that we really are true veteran-friendly, because people are all over that. And I didn't want to take away from my time, but I have to say that. That has been a total success, and I think it's the greatest thing to honor veterans.
Yes, thank you.
Including you, Mr. Mayor, who was on the Walk of Fame over there.
I'm hidden behind a tree, though. Did you notice that?
Well, you do control the public works, so ...
No, I can't control it.
If not, give me a call, and I'll cut down the bush for you. I'm here for a minute to ... What I talk about today is tentative, because a lot of the stuff that's happening with development at the TIF is tentative, because it's ongoing, and some of this stuff has not even been, you know, talked about officially. But I'm here because ... I'm going to call it the House Project, okay? I'm here to reference that, but I want to remind everybody that if you look at downtown, and we've made ... I was one of the first persons here, and I've totally 110% been behind TIF, because I thought it was the only tool we had to make downtown come alive. And I think it's come alive in 110%, and it's a wonderful thing. But I just ... I had to come here today. I support the House Project. However, I just have to be the advocate for some people that aren't here right now. If you look at the TIF district, it's kind of encapsulated and closed in, and TIF III is different than 1 and 2. It's a very logical and small-scale project now. But there's a couple big buildings and some very good people that have been here working for this community, i.e. McCabe's and Andy's over there, okay? I've officially retired. I was the person that was there running the show. But it doesn't mean that some younger group or some other group can't come in here and run the show over there, too. And don't forget, you know, Mel's my friend, and I'm not here to advocate for him, but we still have O'Leary's, which is right across the street from the House. And these projects deserve your consideration, too, and maybe at the back of your mind for you to consider that we are already allocating money. Now, I know that the Mooney Project, I'm going to call it the Mooney Project, isn't official, but I think that if we didn't do that project, if it was my opinion, we would be a fool not to do it. But if you look at that, there's like $2 million at TIF III, and these are all budget numbers. But we have to take that out of 220 and 221. Now, this project today, let's call it the House Brewery, they would be 20, 21, 2. So, you know, we're allocating accounts payable, that I just want to make everybody realize that these are going to come due someday, and I'm fully 110% behind it. But you can't forget the last remaining block and the people that are still left that have been here for many years, because we can't outspend ... It's futile to tell my future customers, "You've got to wait four or five years," when it seems like everybody else is involved, you know? I just don't want you to forget that there's one last block that's left. The Browns have come in here. They're doing a fabulous job on the corner. Last year, every building across from me was sold, and people are doing a great job there. But we should not be denied the same economic incentives as the new group or everybody else that has come to pass. And TIF III is already, if we go through with these allocations, TIF III has already had some allocations that we're going to have to pay as accounts payable, and that's in TIF III.
You're right at three minutes now, Bob, so if you could wrap it up.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The project that they gave us, and again, before, we were always allocated to total project cost versus TIF subsidies, all right? I didn't hear any numbers today, but their project was $1.8 million. They're asking for $770,000. That's 43% of the total project cost. If I'm not mistaken, Johnny on Cornerstone got 33%. So these ... And his new project over there at Mooney is about 7.1 million with roughly 3 million of incentives. That's a much smaller percentage. I also wanted to tell you, in the project that's over there on the corner, and I'm all for it, but I'm looking at that project so that people that come to me and ask me, "What's available? What can I do in DeKalb?" John wanted to put three stories above the place he has on Second Street. He's tearing all that steel down and putting a new place in. So they told us that they're going to put a rooftop. Structural engineering is not final, it's preliminary. To me, these numbers are so outside, they're not even estimates. They're called swag, sophisticated wild-ass guess. And ...
Can you wrap it up? Can you wrap it up?
I'm wrapping it up right now. Breyers, I saw their system going in today. I watched it. Their microbrewery is about five kegs, all right? The gentleman that came up here today, they have a five-keg system in Chicago. I don't know what the Forge sells, but let's say it's 10, which was what we had at the box office brewery. These places are not Budweiser or Goose Island. These are tiny, tiny operations, so you have to look at that based upon the percentages that you're going to allocate. And I'm sorry I took too much time, and thank you very much for your opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Thank you. The next folks who would like to speak, Dennis White and Cheryl White. I'd remind folks, try to keep your remarks to three minutes in that area, and do speak directly into the mic as much as you can. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come here. My wife, beautiful wife, and might I add, intelligent wife, Cheryl, is with me tonight, as well as our next-door neighbor, and her name is Dee Atkinson. And I'm here to ask for the city to have consideration, to take any and all action, to see what they can do to, let's just say, break the new practice of the Union Pacific Railroad from parking their train and abandoning it. And I'm going to bound it by Taylor Street and Fairview, I believe, on that rail line just to the east of Leaven Street. Since about May, the end of May, there have been five events, of which over 200 hours of an abandoned train has been left running, unattended completely. This has also caused health issues with a lot of the residents, the air quality coming off of the fumes of the constant diesel, and if the winds come the right way, it's blowing right in your house, day and night. The noise of the constant blowing off of the air tanks for the air brakes and the constant vibration is maddening, let's just say. There are other issues related to this, as well the environmental issue. I don't know how much five engines can consume in diesel fuel running constantly, but there has got to be a lot of diesel fuel just going to waste. Today, the train left after spending 60 hours at our back door, running constantly. And if you average it over the past six weeks, it's averaging 34 hours a week, each week, 34 hours, we have a train sitting there. We also have a concern that there's some people in this world that might look at that as an opportunity to take a hammer, break a window, and, "Hey, I can make off with a locomotive, and who knows what kind of damage and havoc I can have." That's a concern. This is ... We've gone out and looked at the trains. No one's there. We've gone out and talked to the employees that come get the trains. You ask them what their name is, and I really think Union Pacific needs to improve their hiring qualities, because they don't even know their own names. So these are a concern of all the neighbors. I've talked to several of them. As I said, one of our neighbors is here. Apparently, this practice happened back in 2015, but they were able to stop it. It has recently started up again, and it is a major concern. It's causing health issues, restlessness. They are consistent, though. If there's a holiday coming up, Union Pacific will park it there and make sure that they ruin your weekend, so you can't cook out, you can't have family over and say, "Hey, let's go sit on the deck or patio." You're stuck.
You're right at three minutes now, Mr. White.
All right. So I want to thank you for the time. Me and my wife just recently moved here and retired here to be closer to the grandkids. You'll do anything for grandkids.
Yeah.
I want to say, I worked for 40 years in Iowa, dealing with a lot of councils. This is impressive. You guys pull out the stops in Iowa. We don't get this many people at a council meeting, so anyway. So this is impressive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. Appreciate it.
Can I say something on this?
Absolutely.
You know, I've been in conversations with this gentleman many times. I think we're on speed dial.
Thank you. I got you programmed on my phone.
Thank you. One thing that you did bring up Saturday morning when we had talked about, you looked up some laws on unattended trains and rail codes. I've talked to the city attorney, if you could get him that information, if you could exchange some of that. And then, and we have talked before the meeting, and I think, you know, whatever we can do. I know that Mr. Favor, and I know the police chief has been, has got some contacts, too, so whatever we can do. Thank you.
And I do want to thank Pat and Brian and the police department. You guys have all been extremely helpful, and I do appreciate that.
Thank you. We'll see what we can do. Yeah, thank you. This evening, we'd like to pay special attention to a longtime DeKalb teacher who has labored for 29 years in the nearby Kings, Illinois, system. Our recognition of Tammy Green comes on the heels of her being named the Illinois History Teacher of the Year in Illinois by the Illinois State Historical Society. Tammy, if you'd come forward, please, I'd like to present this certificate to you. It's a certificate of recognition presented to Tammy Green for being named the Illinois State Historical Society's 2018 History Teacher of the Year, honoring your 29 years of teaching. We're delighted that you've been able to stay that long in this classroom, and we're delighted that, as a resident of the city of DeKalb, you make us proud. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Tammy.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Don't forget that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And same to you. Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation after that certificate, and once again, Tammy, congratulations, and thank you for all you do. We have the 2-1-1 Resource and Referral System Update Presentation by Paul Calligan and Kishawaki United Way Executive Director, Don Littlefield. So Paul and Don, please feel free to come up, speak soundly into the microphone, and make your report, please. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Smith. Members of the council, thank you so much for giving us a few minutes this evening to update you on what we think is a very exciting program, 2-1-1. 2-1-1 is a United Way program. It's across the entire nation. Illinois is a little bit underserved, because Chicago is not quite in the 2-1-1 system yet, but we're working on it. But 2-1-1, we were able to bring 2-1-1 to DeKalb County two years ago, and so Mayor Smith and I were speaking the other day and wondered if I might be given a chance to give an update on our progress over that time period. So to that end, we raised initially money for a four-year pilot for 2-1-1, and coming upon our fifth year in terms of planning, we have sustained funding for 2-1-1 moving forward, so we're very pleased about that. And I just want to speak really briefly about, for those folks that may not be familiar, what exactly 2-1-1 is. When we were getting the project under our feet and getting our constituents interested in what it is, we did speak with the 9-1-1 Board and got their endorsement, as well as many other civic organizations and individuals and leadership across the county. So 2-1-1 is essentially a resource and referral program. It's a number that you could call on your phone, a mobile phone, 2-1-1. It does have an 800 number if 2-1-1 is, folks have problems getting through with that extension. But essentially, it is a solution to what a lot of service providers were looking for in that having a consistent database to get folks in DeKalb County the help that they need, help with domestic abuse situations, food pantry information, counseling services, any free services that are available in the county that folks may not know about and can have access to. So we, as United Way, are proud to help to maintain the database of resources. There are over 150 local resources behind that 2-1-1 phone call that folks make. Our call center is located in Bloomington, but we do gather local data to be on the other end of that phone call, and it really does provide streamlined access to services. This was in part a response to the Fairdale tornado a number of years ago. I know Bill Nicholas and I worked on the ground with that, and at the time, we did not have a system, a central system, to coordinate volunteers and to coordinate emergency management. So 2-1-1 is really a nationwide solution to some of these things. And God forbid we have another natural disaster in our county, 2-1-1 will be poised to be a positioned response for that. The operators are trained in FEMA response, emergency response protocols. They're trained in information referral protocols, and also suicide prevention and many other of those types of training. So we really feel that is a very robust system, and it is working very efficiently in our county. So I mentioned a little bit why. Well, Ferriell kind of demonstrated to us that we really needed a robust system for coordination and referrals. It is a 24-hour call center, and we were finding that our neighbors around us were really engaging with 2-1-1, so we felt DeKalb County was time to have that conversation and to really push forward with that. It is computerized, and it is updated annually by our PATH, who is our service provider, so it is a really robust and sustainable program. And really, there's not, there's some anecdotal data, too, that it does reduce non-emergency calls to 9-1-1. The more we get the word out about folks that could call 2-1-1 instead of 9-1-1 for what is not a true emergency, we hope that that will alleviate some of the emergency services that are not truly supposed to be going to 9-1-1. And so I'd like to call Paul Calligan up to speak for a few minutes about some of the data that we're able to collect with 2-1-1, and a little bit about his role in the process. So Paul?
Thank you, Don. One of the benefits of the computerized system is a quarterly report for DeKalb County. Now, I don't expect you to be able to read all of the specific data that's on this slide, but it just shows you the types of things that we have available. We'll hand you a copy of this before we leave tonight. These reports do show things like call volume, frequent referrals, top unmet needs, and this provides statistical data to our service providers to better understand which services are in most demand and what needs are being unmet. We've also learned that many callers need more than one service. For example, perhaps someone needs rent assistance, but they also need overfill to a food pantry, something that can be easily matched through this computer system, but took a lot more work when you were dealing with multiple paper directories and no single point of contact. Preliminary estimates indicate that we've had 1,000 individuals contacting 2-1-1 since it became active two years ago. As Don mentioned, we've had 150 local agencies in the 2-1-1 database, but the task of continuing to build that database continues. And so we ask you that if you're aware of any new agency, or an agency that has updated some services, they should contact our service provider, which is through www/pathcrisis.org, to make sure their data gets entered. If you'd like to be more involved directly with 2-1-1, you may contact Don at United Way and get on our list for notification of meetings for what we call our 2-1-1 Champion Group. And above all, if you have anyone, a colleague, a friend, a relative, who is in need to find help ...
We'll park it there and make sure that they ruin your, your weekend so you can't cook out, you can't have family over and say, hey, let's go sit on the deck or patio. You're, you're stuck.
Right at three minutes now, Mr. White.
Alright, so. I, I want to thank you for the time. Me and my wife just recently moved here and retired here to be closer to the grandkids. You'll do anything for, for grandkids.
Yeah.
I, I want to say, I worked for forty years in, in Iowa dealing with a lot of councils. This is impressive. You guys pull out the stops in Iowa. We don't get this many people at a council meeting, so anyway. So this is impressive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. Appreciate it.
Can I say something on this?
Absolutely.
Um, you know, I've been conversations with, with this gentleman many times. I think we're on speed dial.
Yeah. I got you programmed under my phone.
Thank you. Um, one thing that you did bring up Saturday morning when we had talked about, you looked up some laws on unattended trains and, and railco. We, I've talked to the city attorney. If you could get him that information, if you could exchange some of that.
Yeah.
And then, and we have talked before the, before the meeting. And I think, you know, whatever we can do. I know that the, Mr. Favor and I know the police chief has been, has got some contacts too, so whatever we can do. Thank you.
And I do want to thank Pat and Brian and the police department. You guys all men have been insanely helpful and I do appreciate that.
Thank you. We'll see what we can do. Yeah. Thank you. and thank you for all you do. This evening, we'd like to pay special attention to a longtime DeKalb teacher who has labored We have the 2-1-1 Resource and Referral System Update Presentation by Paul Calligan and for twenty-nine years in the nearby Kings, Illinois system. Kishawaki United Way Executive Director, Don Littlefield. So Paul and Don, please feel free to come up, speak roundly, soundly into the microphone Our recognition of Tammy Green comes on the heels of her being named the Illinois History and make your report, please. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mayor Smith. Members of the council, thank you so much for giving us a few minutes this evening to
Teacher of the Year in Illinois by the Illinois State Historical Society.
update you on what we think is a very exciting program, 2-1-1. Uh, 2-1-1 is a United Way program.
Tammy, if you'd come forward, please, I'd like to present this certificate to you.
It's across the entire nation. Uh, Illinois is a little bit underserved because Chicago is not quite in the 2-1-1
It's a certificate of recognition presented to Tammy Green for being named the Illinois
system yet, but we're working on it. Uh, but 2-1-1, we were able to bring 2-1-1 to DeKalb County two years ago.
State Historical Society's 2018 History Teacher of the Year honoring your twenty-nine years
And so, uh, Mayor Smith and I were speaking the other day and wondered if I might be
of teaching. We're delighted that you've been able to stay that long in this classroom and we're
given a chance to give an update on our progress over that time period. So, uh, to that end, we raised initially money for a four-year pilot for 2-1-1 and
delighted that as a resident of the city of DeKalb, you make us proud. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Tammy.
coming upon our fifth year in terms of planning, we have sustained funding for 2-1-1 moving
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And same you.
forward, so we're very pleased about that.
Thank you.
And I just want to speak really briefly about, uh, for those folks that may not be familiar, what exactly 2-1-1 is. Um, when we were getting the project on, uh, under our feet and getting our constituents interested in, in what it is, we did speak with the 9-1-1 Board and got their endorsement as well as many other civic organizations and individuals and leadership across the county. So 2-1-1 is essentially a resource and referral program. It's a, it's a number that you could call on your phone, a mobile phone, 2-1-1. It does have an 800 number if 2-1-1 is, is, folks have problems getting through with that extension. But essentially, it is a solution to what a lot of service providers were looking for in that having a consistent database to get folks in DeKalb County the help that they need. Um, help with domestic abuse situations, food pantry information, counseling services, any free services that are available in the county that folks may not know about and can have access to. So we as United Way are proud to help to maintain the database of resources. There are over a hundred and fifty local resources behind that 2-1-1 phone call that folks make. Um, our call center is located in Bloomington, but we do gather local data to be on the other end of that phone call. And it really does provide streamlined access to services. This was up in part a response to the Fairdale tornado a number of years ago. I know Bill Nicholas and I worked on the ground with that. And at the time, we did not have a system, a central system to coordinate volunteers and to coordinate emergency management. So 2-1-1 is really a nationwide solution to some of these things. And God forbid we have another natural disaster in our county, 2-1-1 will be poised to be a positioned response for that. The operators are trained in FEMA response, emergency response protocols. They're trained in information referral protocols and also suicide prevention and many other of those types of training. So we are really, um, feel that is a very robust system. It is working very efficiently in our county. So I mentioned a little bit why, well, FERIO kind of demonstrated to us that we really needed a robust system for coordination and referrals. Um, it is a 24-hour call center and we were finding that our neighbors around us were really engaging with 2-1-1, so we felt to DeKalb County it was time to, to have that conversation and to really push forward with that. Um, it is a computerized and it is updated annually by the, our PATH, who is our service provider. So it is a really robust and sustainable program. And really, um, there's not, there's some anecdotal data too that it does reduce non-emergency calls to 9-1-1. If the more we get the word out about folks that could call 2-1-1 instead of 9-1-1 for what is not a true emergency, we hope that that will alleviate some of the emergency services that are not truly supposed to be going to 9-1-1. And so I'd like to call Paul Calligan up to speak for a few minutes about some of the data that we're able to collect with 2-1-1 and a little bit about his role in the process. So Paul?
Thank you, Don. One of the benefits of the computerized system is a quarterly report for DeKalb County. Now, I don't expect you to be able to read all of the specific data that's on this slide, but it just shows you the types of things that we have available. We'll hand you a copy of this before we leave tonight. Uh, these reports do show things like call volume, frequent referrals, top unmet needs, and this provides statistical data to our service providers to better understand which services are in most demand and what needs are being unmet. We've also learned that many callers need more than one service. For example, perhaps someone needs rent assistance, but they also need overflow to a food pantry. Something that can be easily matched through this computer system, but took a lot more work when you were dealing with multiple paper directories and no single point of contact. Preliminary estimates indicate that we've had a thousand individuals contacting 2-1-1 since it became active two years ago. As Don mentioned, we've, um, had a hundred and fifty local agencies in the 2-1-1 database, but the task of continuing to build that database continues. And so we ask you that if you're aware of any new agency or an agency that has updated some services, they should contact our service provider, which is through www.pathcrisis.org to make sure their data gets entered. If you'd like to be more involved directly with 2-1-1, you may contact Don at United Way and get on our list for notification of meetings for what we call our 2-1-1 Champion Group. And above all, if you have anyone, a colleague, a friend, a relative, who is in need to find help, have them call 2-1-1. And thank you for the opportunity to say.
Before you, before you leave, Paul and Don, any questions or comments from anybody on the council? Alderman Morris?
So Paul came and spoke to my Rotary Club and told us about this, and I just have a brief testimonial. Um, I actually had a friend text me and say, hey, I need rental assistance. What can I do? And I was like, oh, let me, and I, you know, I had the little pamphlet you gave me and I was like, wait, maybe I can actually remember this number. And I tossed the pamphlet and I remembered the number and I was, so I called and I used it and I was able to get them no less than maybe five different options within the next forty-eight hours that they would be able to go and go to. So it was a fantastic resource, tons of information that I would not have been able to give them nearly that quickly. And especially when you're about to be evicted or your water or electric's about to be turned off, that's an urgent need and we were able to meet it so fast. So thank you. I'm so glad that that helped.
You know, I use the word, the expression, community treasurer when I was talking about Frank Byer last year. We have so many folks who give so much time. And Don Littlefield, she's employed, but she has so much passion about her job as Executive Director of the Kishawaki United Way. Paul Calligan, longtime veteran of Commonwealth Edison and right now the consummate volunteer in our community. And Paul, I appreciate your giving Don and her folks assistance as we continue to roll out 2-1-1. Thank you very, very much. Let's give him a hand. Okay.
Thank you so much. I love this data too.
Our next, uh, presentation tonight is a certificate and a proclamation, actually, that I am going to present to Amy Dowell, our Executive Director of the DeKalb Park District. I, she's, see, she's accompanied tonight by the President of the DeKalb Park Board, Phil Young. Uh, on Saturday, July 13th, all across Illinois, people will ditch their electronic devices --
Are you sure?
-- and unplug, and unplug to enjoy everything that their local park and recreation agencies have to offer. So I'd like to present this proclamation to Phil and to Amy. Uh, let me just read briefly and then I'd like you to take a few minutes, if you would, to explain what Unplug DeKalb Day is all about. I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim July 13, 2019 to be Unplug DeKalb Day in the City of DeKalb and encourage all citizens to participate in this opportunity to unplug from their electronic devices and visit the DeKalb Park District Parks and Facilities. Amy and Phil, here's this proclamation. Appreciate it and I'd like, I know you'd like to say a few words about Unplug DeKalb. Okay?
Thank you.
I'm gonna hate to say I'm doing this electronically, but.
You're not.
So we can still do it, right?
Better.
Okay. Well, on behalf of the DeKalb Park District Board of Commissioners, I want to thank you, Mayor Smith and council members. Um, I didn't really have a lot to say. Amy will give more of the data of what we're doing, but a couple of facts. Uh, one is that eighty percent of Americans today, um, are, are not doing enough exercise. And that's a troubling statistic. And obviously with the Park District, we love people to come out and use the playgrounds and exercise as much as possible. But even more troubling is a statistic, forty-three percent of Americans age eighteen to twenty-nine use their smartphones for over four hours a day. And I can absolutely attest to that with three daughters and doing a ten-day road trip. Cell phones are a big thing, but it is, it is a troubling dilemma. And you wonder what these devices do to our children's eyesight. How do they help or not help in terms of social development when you're glued to these devices all the time? Um, so I, I remember like about a year ago, we had Pokemon Go was a big thing, Augman Reality. And while I was using electronic technology, it still got a lot of people out of the house, a lot of young adults and kids. And we'd see them walking around the park, you know, running into things with their phones. But it was great to see them come out and, and get fresh air. So, uh, the Park District supports this initiative, this resolution, and we hope that many will unplug on this day and explore our communities. Thank you.
So this is a part of a statewide initiative through the Illinois Park and Recreation Association. So they have proclaimed it to be Unplug Illinois Day, and so we wanted to make it a local initiative. Um, so just a few of the details. Um, as always, you know, we encourage people to get out on Saturday and use our, our parks and our facilities. Our parks and trails are free as also, as always, but we'll also be offering free admission to H-S Gym, to our facility there from nine AM to noon on Saturday morning. And then they'll also be doing a buy-one-get-one free admission to the pool on Saturday afternoon from three to five. And our pool staff have planned some fun games and activities for that, for that time period on Saturday afternoon. So we really hope that people will take advantage of the opportunity and we'll have information on our website that they can look at throughout this week and then they hope they'll turn it off on Saturday and join us in our parks and facilities.
Any comments? If not, Amy, Phil, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck to all of us turning off those devices and getting more exercise. How's that? Okay, uh, one of the agencies that receives funding from the City of DeKalb and as it did in FY 2019, from our Human Services funding, is N'Gogo Saba. And who'd like to make that presentation? Derek? That is Derek, isn't it?
Yes.
It is. I had Jerry Wright, but you're not Jerry Wright. Yeah.
I cleared that up pretty soon. Good evening.
Good evening.
Jerry Wright was supposed to be here and I was supposed to be at the camp, but, uh, he had something come up. He's a business owner. He owns a restaurant. And they needed him and so he called me about 5:30 and told me to be here. So I'm not prepared as far as materials, but I can tell you about the program. The program started about thirty-two years ago. We, uh, started as the, we were in the N'Gogo Saba Men's Club and we saw there was a problem with our young, especially African-American males hanging out in front of, uh, 7-Eleven on Andy Glidden Road. And so we said we have to do something to keep them off the streets in the summer to, uh, keep them busy and, and to do something to try to educate them more where the summer won't be a, a long, like, layoff in between. And so what we started, we'd have a mentoring program. And we was trying to decide how can we get the young men to come to a mentoring program, which would be like pulling teeth. And so we came up with the idea, we'd throw basketball in there. And so we decided to have a basketball mentoring program. And I think our first year, we averaged about fifty young men. And we did it voluntarily, five hours a day, five days a week, six weeks, eight weeks the first time. And then we went down to six weeks. But we've been doing that ever since and the, the big thing about the program is, uh, no fee. So we wanted to attract, uh, and bring in a, a population that weren't, um, getting attention that they needed as far as summer basketball programs, because most of the camps, as you know, cost three hundred, four hundred dollars if you have two or three kids. Now you owe twelve hundred dollars. So we wanted to do something that we could help them out to enjoy a, a basketball camp and improve their skill and improve their attitudes as far as teammates. And, uh, that's when we became really involved in, in what we're doing. And about ten years ago, we finally decided to let females in the program. I wasn't sure how I could deal with females because I have four sons. And most of the guys that started the program would be his son, but the, the girls kept bugging us and pushing us until we decided to let them in. And now we almost, it's almost fifty-fifty as far as the young ladies and the young men. And, uh, we're really proud of that. And the young girls are doing good. Most of them play for the, uh, DeKalb High School or the middle schools. And we start from third grade to twelfth grade. And right now, we're doing it at Anderson Hall. Uh, five hours, four days, and it's going to go be four weeks this year because we took a hit with that, uh, funding cut. And so instead of the six weeks, we had to do four because now the university is charging us fifteen hundred dollars for rental, which they didn't do the last seven, eight years. And so last year, basically, I almost had to pay it out of my pocket because we got that information late and, uh, the money was due. But we're gonna try to keep the program up. We have to break it down from, uh, we averaged a hundred and twenty participants. Now we're trying to keep it close to like ninety because, uh, we don't have the staff really to work with, uh, the participants that we could have. And so, um, we're just working hard to make this work because, uh, there's a lot of students and a lot of young people that don't feel like the community is, uh, favoring them. And so we try to make them feel like, you know, you are part of the community and, uh, you need to try to do things to make the community better. Because we do, we love you and we wanna, we wanna look out for you. We want you to have the best opportunities you can to be the best man or woman that you can be.
We appreciate that, Derek. Any questions or comments of that? I think we funded you for a number of years.
Yes.
We do know that we, we had that cut as a number of social services agencies did. We will continue to try to be as supportive of your organization and others, and we do appreciate your report tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move right along now to item F on your agenda, and that's appointments. Uh, we have, uh, six appointments this evening. Uh, and unless there is a, uh, an indication that we want to do otherwise, we will, uh, give this to you, council, in omnibus form. Okay? And so that we will vote all of these in one false swoop, if you will. Uh, tonight, uh, the appointments by the mayor are as follows. Number one, appointment of Carolyn, Councilmember Carolyn Morris as Council Liaison to the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission. Number two, appointment of Councilmember Tracy Smith as Council Liaison to the Landmark Commission. Number three, appointment of Councilmember Scott McAdams as Council Liaison to the Human Relations Commission. Number four, appointment of Virginia Wilcox to the Citizens Environmental Commission for the completion of a two-year term through December 31, 2020. Number five, appointment of Tyrus Wright to the Human Relations Commission for the completion of a three-year term through December 31, 2022. And finally, appointment of Melissa Gallagher to the Airport Advisory Board for the completion of a four-year term through December 31, 2022. I'd entertain a motion to approve these appointments and reappointments.
So moved.
Seconded. Been moved by Alderman Fanucan, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanucan.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. Those appointments are approved. Now we move to the consent agenda, item G on the printed agenda tonight. Again, all items listed are enacted by one motion unless a council member requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda. Do we see any of that action required or asked for? No? Then let me read each of the following items separately and then we will vote by, in one motion. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 24, 2019. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through July 8, 2019 in the amount of $2,218,445.14. Number three, Resolution 2019-110 authorizing the release of certain executive session meeting minutes and the destruction of certain verbatim recordings. And number four, Resolution 2019-111 receiving and filing the FY 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That's the CAFR Audit Report and Management Letter. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any further comment? Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanucan.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved as read. We have no public hearings this evening. We move along now to considerations. We have one consideration tonight, and that's the consideration of interest by Sendeo in an airport lease. And I'm gonna ask City Manager Bill Nicholas to speak to this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As I indicated in the background, Sendeo is an internet services provider. It's been providing internet connections for the City of DeKalb for some time. It's owned and operated by Amit Patel. Uh, Mr. Patel and Dan Halberstern, who's in the audience tonight, who is the President of DeKalb Fiber Optic, and, uh, the two of them work collaboratively on a lot of this type of work, are proposing, uh, a venture that would involve our airport property. I'd like to describe that briefly, and Dan is here in the audience if you have any questions of him. The proposition was first brought to the Airport Advisory Board at the last regular meeting, and it is this. Uh, we have, uh, a fiber optic system that has many ribs underground that go north and south on Peace Road, uh, as an example, and also east and west on Pleasant Street. Uh, there is, uh, what's known in business as a handhold, which is an underground vault at the northeast corner of Peace and Pleasant. Uh, as you might imagine, since there are about two thousand, uh, fiber strands in that, uh, it's a major, uh, raceway, if you will, for a lot of information every day, that, that's not the, the best controlled environment. And also, uh, there are four-legged pests and maybe two-legged pests that, uh, live underground and do get into these, these environments. Uh, what Sendeo and, and DeKalb Fiber would like to do is, uh, build, uh, some space, uh, immediately south, or excuse me, immediately north of our maintenance building on airport property. Now, because our airport properties over the years have been accumulated, assembled and built on with federal money, we can't sell off pieces of that even if we wanted to. But we can consider a ground lease. And what they're proposing here tonight is a concept of a ground lease for a building that would then, uh, be the point for relocation of these fiber junctions, uh, at Pleasant and Peace. This, uh, is also a junction, by the way, that serves our airport, uh, activity, uh, electronic activity. So, uh, it would solve several purposes. One is to provide a, a more controlled, temperature-controlled and, and safe environment, uh, secure environment, I should say. And, uh, also would give them a, a space that they can more readily work on, not only what exists now, but what will exist into the future. And what we have in mind, and we would bring this back to the council for a more formal consideration, is probably a twenty-year ground lease. We'll be working on this with John and his associate, Matthew Rose, uh, in the next couple of weeks. And, uh, that ground lease would define reciprocal, uh, obligations and, and duties of the various parties, including the city, obviously. So this is a heads up to you that we'll be coming your way with something like that.
As you may have alluded to, Bill, uh, this was, uh, approved pretty much, you know, the, the concept was favored by the Airport Advisory Board, which met, uh, just a couple of weeks ago and moved it to council for our consideration. Again, we have no vote on this tonight. It is strictly informational. But with that, I'd like to see if there's any questions or comments. Alderman Fagan.
I just want to point out that, you know, as we're looking at the airport, we want to make sure it's utilized a hundred and ten percent for the airport. I like how it's set off. I mean, it's not as if there would be an airport hangar there that could be put in there or anything like that. Alright, thank you.
Uh, and what I should say is, uh, there is some land between the spot that has been identified for tonight's discussion and Pleasant Street that's not owned by the city. So there's no room there to navigate a plane into a T-hanger, for instance.
Okay. Any further comments? Okay, we'll move along then to resolutions. Item J on your agenda. Resolution 2019-112 authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District for the purchase of a vehicle in the amount of $57,500. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Fanucan, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any further discussion? City Manager Nicholas, please.
Don't have a lot to add to the background except to say this is an exciting opportunity. So this is a heads up to you that we'll be coming your way with something like that.
As you may have alluded to, Bill, uh this was uh approved pretty much, you know, the, the concept was favored by the Airport Advisory Board, which met uh just a couple of weeks ago and moved it to council for our consideration. Again, we have no vote on this tonight. It is strictly informational. But with that, I'd like to see if there's any questions or comments. Alderman Fagan.
I just wanna point out that, you know, as we're looking at the airport, we wanna make sure it's utilized one hundred and ten percent for the airport. I like how it's set off, I mean, it's not as if there would be a airport hangar there that could be put in there or anything like that.
No.
All right, thank you.
Uh and what I should say is uh there is some land between the spot that has been identified for tonight's discussion and Pleasant Street that's not owned by the city. So there's no room there to navigate a plane into a T-hanger, for instance.
Okay, any further comments? Okay, we'll move along then to resolutions. Item J on your agenda. Resolution two thousand and nineteen dash one-one-two authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District for the purchase of a vehicle in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any further discussion? City manager Nicholas, please.
Don't have a lot to add to the background except to say this is an exciting opportunity that's been brought to us because of the close collaboration we have uh through the year with uh the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, formerly the DeKalb Sanitary District. Uh we help each other out when there are breaks and mains and, and other things. Uh they have a vehicle, which is uh an older vehicle, a two thousand and four Vector, but these uh don't go over the road, so to speak. They don't have a lot of miles on them. They may have a fair amount of use and this is, this would give us more flexibility than we've ever had with one vehicle in the street operation side. It uh can help us with brakes, uh instead of uh struggling with pumps, uh six, ten feet in the ground and, and this, uh even, even with the best shoring and metal shoring and so forth, it's sloppy conditions underfoot, this can go in and literally suck it dry in, in a very short period of time. Uh it, it also can be used for cleaning catch basins, which we do laboriously with equipment that we have and, and a variety of things. Communities that have taken this vehicle, type of vehicle on have, have never regretted it and I've known a number. We saw a demonstration about a month ago, uh Brian Favor and I, and uh we're much impressed with the operability of this, this older machine. Uh it's at a, it's offered at a price which is well below what we might have to uh pay if we were to buy this off the open market and so we recommend very strongly uh that you support this and uh it's ready to come our way. Uh we can taste it.
Good. Been moved and seconded that we approve this resolution, any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
You're welcome. Thank you. That resolution passes. Number K, or item K on the agenda, ordinances for second reading, we have none tonight. We do have several ordinances for uh first reading. The first is ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash zero-four-seven, amending chapter ten, Landlord Tenant Regulations, section ten point zero-eight, Landlord Tenant Handbook. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Enter, been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Are there any comments or questions? If not, Ald, uh, city manager Nicholas.
Just very quickly, uh this is a handbook that's been in existence since uh two thousand and one. It's been updated several times. It was much in need of new updating just for uh more accurate places and names and so forth and also uh to incorporate the, the crime-free housing uh provisions that this council previously, previous councils have implemented in recent years. Uh I believe your copy was also highlighted to show the changes. The uh draft before you was reviewed by uh the DeKalb Area Rental Association, uh the city's Business Coordination Committee, our city attorney Matt Rose, Crime-Free Housing Inspection Coordinator Carl Leone and other staff and we feel it is accurate as it is written and uh recommend your support.
Okay, yeah, looks like a number of eyes have taken a look at it. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
That ordinance passes on first reading.
Move to waive second reading and approve.
I second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we waive second reading and approve. Discussion? Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you, that ordinance passes. Number two, ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash zero-four-eight authorizing a special services agreement with the DeKalb Municipal Band for Services beginning January one, two thousand and nineteen through December thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and amending the budget for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, FY two thousand and nineteen. A motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas, please.
Uh thank you, mayor. The background describes uh what the purpose is. Uh the uh municipal band's funding in a time of fiscal constraint has been uh cut in each of the last two years by about ten thousand dollars each year and uh it currently stands at thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And talk, some with very much, we've looked uh at the budget. Uh this is prompted by the fact that uh I took a close look at these uh at the Fourth of July uh event. Uh their, their chairs need to be replaced. They've, these are things that fall to the band to do. My proposition here is pretty straightforward that if we could restore five thousand dollars to that spending line item, uh we have an offset which we found uh in this year's budget, there was some anticipation of spending more on recruitment services. The uh city manager you selected came from a local location, so uh he didn't have to spend um the money that was there. There's, there's easily the five thousand there and uh we understand the band has raised more than five thousand dollars of their own, on their own, uh through their fundraising efforts and uh so if we restore the five, that other five that they throw in is uh sort of the balance for that and we feel that's a fair proposition and we bring that to you.
So the motion on the floor includes amending the budget, which means that we're going to have to have a certain number of positive votes, is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay, has any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Is there any desire to waive second reading and approve?
Motion to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we waive second reading and approve. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Hey, thank, thank you, that ordinance passes. Number three, ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash zero-four-nine, amending the fiscal year and two thousand, excuse me, December thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, FY two thousand and nineteen budget to execute a loan from the water fund for the installation of a fire suppression system at nine twenty-four Greenbrier Road. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fagan. City manager Nicholas, please.
Right, we've talked a, a number of occasions since first of the year and, and the council wrestled with this over the last year and a half or so and that is the um the requirement that our local rooming houses, particularly Greek roll houses, get uh sprinkled and that's a state statute uh requirement and, and we have been the enforcing body. And uh to facilitate the renovation of these rooming houses, the council about a year ago came up with a, a loan program where a qualified rooming house could uh get uh up to eighty percent of the installation cost uh through a five-year uh loan that would have an interest rate of five and a quarter percent. Uh one of those properties showed interest last year, that was at nine twenty-four Greenbrier. Uh however, uh although the, the loan uh was agreed on, the, the work was not completed before the end of two thousand and eighteen. Uh the two thousand and eighteen budget is now closed, we've had the audit presented. Uh so what we'll have to do to uh follow through on the, the commitment to help with the loan program is to make this loan from the two thousand and nineteen budget. Obviously, the expenditure line item has to be revised, therefore the budget amendment that's proposed here tonight, we uh recommend your support.
Any further discussion on this first reading? Roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you, motion passes on first reading. Is there a desire to waive second reading and approve?
I'd like to make a motion to waive second reading and approve.
I'll second that.
Uh it's been uh moved by uh Alderman Fagan, seconded by Alderman Morris, that we waive second reading and approve this. Any further discussion on that? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
That ordinance passes, thank you very much. Our final item on the agenda tonight under ordinances is two thousand and nineteen dash zero-five-zero, authorizing a special use permit for a video gaming establishment at one twenty-two East Hillcrest Drive, RLDR LLC. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, mayor. Uh and the, the reading of the title pretty much tells a story. Uh the proposition here is a special use permit, which is required in this case and the plan commission has uh through a public hearing, uh heard the petition for a special use permit as, as required by our code and that was done uh in mid-June and voted unanimously to recommend to you approval of that special use permit. There are some conditions that are outlined in our planner Dan Olson's background report to you. Uh the uh, the owner, and I'll just read the official title, Simo's in the audience tonight, RLDR LLC, uh and has agreed to, to comply with these conditions and we recommend your approval.
Any further discussion on this?
Yes.
Alderman Fagan.
We had an agreement on how many we could have.
Yes. And this does not go over that agreement, the number.
How many is out there?
Dan's at ten.
Yes, we're a lot of tenants.
And where are we at right now?
Uh we should be, with this approval, we would be at nine.
So there'd be one more, so there'd be one more after this?
Be the fatties new building, right, the new establishment.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I don't, I'm, you know, I, I voted for, for the standalones before, I just, I'd like to keep something for, whether it be a tavern restaurant to help or a service club, cause that's really helped out service clubs. But the other thing is, the question I have on this, Dan, was there any opposition to this uh from neighbors or anything like that?
We did have one neighbor uh speak regarding concerns about the operation and the safety than proximity of the kinder care across the street. I think through the discussion explanation that these uses and we also had some analysis by the police department looking at our other video gaming establishments, that these are not a public safety issue. Uh there should be no, the other ones we already have in the city have low number of service calls to them. Um so the commission heard the comments but recommended unanimous approval of it. And regarding the number, this doesn't affect the fraternal organizations or restaurants or bars. This is only for the standalone that doesn't attend. So there's others, if they come in and get the license, they can, there's others that are open for those types. There's no limit on those.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Motion passes on first reading. Is there, is there a desire to waive second reading and approve?
Move to waive second reading and approve.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Uh any further discussion? Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Simo, thank you for continuing to invest in our community. Appreciate it. Okay, reports and commissions. Uh this is a opportunity for any of our council members and city clerk and city manager to make any comments they might like and we'll start with our first ward alderman, Carolyn Morris.
Uh this week we held a ward meeting. It was attended by the mayor and the city manager. Um it was well-attended by local business owners. Uh we had at least five residents there complaining of parking issues, um so that was clearly a substantial issue for them. Um many of them lived up by um the north end of Normal, just uh east of there. So it sounds like the parking limitations are forcing people, not forcing, but people are choosing to go just beyond the line and park in their neighborhood and um people are parking there for four or five days at a time and it's sort of making them feel insecure and unsafe. Um so, and they've been calling the police repeatedly, so I, you know, the city manager addressed it uh very much so with the uh residents who were there and once the city manager was gone, it came up again and we talked about it again extensively and um and I, I've seen email correspondence from um the police chief and the city manager regarding this, so we're on it. Um you know, we need to talk more about it and see what the solution's gonna be. Um it, oh, okay, so, and then we still got Double Dutch going on on Saturdays in the ward, which is really exciting. I was thrilled to hear from this guy, I wanna, you know, the um Derek who spoke. I need to get his contact info from someone, I'd love to hear more about that. Um and just a, an idea, um I've been walking to school and just seeing the mess and so I've been picking up and we did, uh um Alderman Favor and I did some trash picking up also on a Saturday walk a couple of weeks ago and um, you know, I just thought it might be nice to do some kind of ward meeting type thing, like for the whole city where maybe we do a cleanup DeKalb in all the various areas and, you know, spread it out, so.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Alderman Fanouken.
Uh no report.
Alderman Fagan.
No report.
Alderman McAdams.
Uh this Thursday, the eleventh, uh we are gonna uh sit down in this very meeting hall and discuss progress on parking in the historic Elwood District as well as proposals for parking on Barb Street and any other issues in the fifth ward.
What time's that?
Seven PM.
Thank you. Alderman Verbic.
The sixth ward in the city of DeKalb offer a warm welcome to the conference for Jehovah's Witnesses, which will be taking place the, the next three weekends, Friday, Saturday and Sunday at the Convocation Center uh through July and also to Drum Corps International, uh which will be performing uh this Saturday at Husky Stadium.
Alderman Favor.
Uh I don't have a date yet, but parking is a hot issue and uh for Ward seven, we'll be talking about parking uh in Ward seven at a future date and I'll let everyone know when that's, when that occurs.
This is great collaboration, folks, it really is. Alderman Morris, Alderman McAdams, Alderman Favor. You know, we were talking about it this briefly, city manager and I, what, what changes we make in Alderman, or excuse me, in Ward one may impact Alderman or residents in Alder, uh in Ward seven or in Ward five conversely, so thank you for collaborating on that. Uh as they say, the hits just keep on coming or to be more specific, events in our community, a quick reminder that music will fill the air in DeKalb this week. Tomorrow night's band concert, Wednesday's Music at the Mansion, Thursday's noon concert at the Farmer's Market, uh Friday evening's Lights for Liberty Rally, on Saturday, the Drum and Bugle Corps Extravaganza. Drum and Bugle Corps Extravaganza. I found out today, we have folks in town from Madison, Wisconsin, Dubuque, Iowa, Tempe, Arizona, Sacramento, California, La Crosse, Wisconsin, Rosemont, Illinois, Canton, Ohio, and Rockford, Illinois. One of my friends this morning said he was going to have a family reunion, he couldn't find a hotel room anywhere around here, so I think we're going to have a full house, so to speak, in town this coming weekend. Also, during the day on Saturday, the annual Master Gardeners Garden Walk will be staged, including several DeKalb gardens, and on Sunday, Gary Mullis's 11th Annual Country Music Show will be held at 1:30 to 5:00 at Taylor Street High Rise. Folks are invited to bring school supplies of all kinds and listen to some great country music. You know, we're delighted that week after week, city council meeting, we see our Daily Chronicle reporter, Kelsey Redkey, with us. Kelsey, it's great to always see you, but I'd like to say, welcome back to WLBK's Scott Zach. Scott, I know you've been gone a number of weeks, you had some recent surgery and all that, I understand everything is going fine, it's great to have you back, it really is.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interject, you did forget one event this weekend that you're involved in.
Absolutely, I'm surprised that Alderman Fanouken wouldn't say something about it.
Well, Biking with Beans, sponsored by the Kishawaki Kiwanis Club, is this Sunday. Registration opens at 6:30 at DeKalb High School, and there's five different route lengths along with a community ride using the bike paths.
And I get to work at Whiskey Acres, but it's 9:00 in the morning.
Jerry, I don't understand why you picked that place out.
Okay, now, do we have any report from city clerk, Lynn Fazekas?
Thank you, no report today.
And city manager, Bill Nicholas.
No report.
Sunday.
We do have an executive session planned this evening. This is an executive session pursuant to 5ILCS 120/2. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve to hold the executive session in order to discuss purchase or lease of real property as provided for in 5ILCS 120/2C5.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fagan, seconded by Alderman Morris. Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
We are now recessed into executive session, thank you.